There we go, start tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting for April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. With me tonight is Nicole Porter, Selectwoman. I am Bob Carlson, the first Selectman, and unfortunately, Ms. Brett Mastriani, our Selectman, is coming back from vacation, so he is not here. Sitting in for Brett will be William Shakespeare, as you can see on, if you're watching online. But we start with a pledge of allegiance. Okay, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Nothing online, nothing, nothing online. It's funny, that meeting last night, everyone was here, everyone was tired, tired. A lot of, a lot of coming back tomorrow night, I think, to the Board of Selectmen meeting again, so, yeah. That's okay. Selectmen comments? About forty, yeah, yeah. Any comments, Nicole, turn it to you? And nothing from Bill over there, so he's quiet.
Of course, no one's online.
Yeah, they will watch it tomorrow, and I will be here.
That's right, that's right. So, quick question, I know months back when we talked about the demolition and the work that's being done, and then coming back in the spring to do the hydroseeding. I'm assuming that they're just gonna do everything all at once, and then when they're done, they're done, right? They're not gonna...
Correct, so if you saw the wall tonight, I don't know if you went by and saw it, but it's three feet from the top now. They've made all that progress in two days, so I expect them to be done by the end of this week. Once they get done with the wall, they'll take the fence down, they're gonna come in and finish grade the property, and then they'll hydroseed it.
Okay.
Then I'm gonna ask Donnie to go there with the street sweeper to clean the parking lot that's there. That probably won't be there eventually, but for now.
Yeah.
We've got a referendum coming up, and we have high school graduations, so I want to make sure that people don't park on the grass. So by leaving that parking lot there, we'll have a parking option. So then you'll have, and I'm gonna ask him if you can stake off the grass areas with grading stakes and caution tape or something, so we don't have anybody driving on the grass.
Okay.
So I'd say in about two weeks, it should look pretty nice out there, and then the grass will grow. Hydroseed grows quick.
Okay. I'm excited to have it back to kind of normal for graduation.
Oh, it'll be, yeah, I talked to Troy, it'll be in great shape for graduation.
Good.
Okay. First Selectmen comments, I have just two correspondence. One is from the North Stonington Lions. Dear Board of Selectmen, we are pleased to inform you that the North Stonington Lions Club is in the process of preparing for this year's Memorial Day Parade. The parade is Monday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten a.m. The parade committee would like to keep the traditional route, with the parade stepping off at the Grange on Wyosup Road and proceeding through the village on East Main Street, and then along Route Two to Rocky Hollow Road, and then back through the village to the site of the old middle school for the Memorial Day ceremony. We realize that we may need to make some accommodations for chairs and possibly electrical power, and now the middle school is no longer there. This letter is to request your authorization for the North Stonington Lions to conduct the parade on that date and time and route as described above. We sincerely hope for your approval again this year. Please plan to participate in the parade as our guest by riding in an automobile, or walking, and by attending the Memorial Day ceremony. In the case of a severe weather, the Memorial Day ceremony will be held at the North Stonington Grange in lieu of the parade, in lieu of the parade, especially yours, Tom Adams. So, we just have to traditionally revoke to approve them, and I have their insurance, liability insurance, so I'll give that to Christine, so entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the Lion Club's recommend or request for the Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-ninth.
And I'll second that motion, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the court has two zero and one absent.
So, are we able to use our stage?
Um...
Have we used the stage?
We have not used it yet.
Would that not be a really good...
It might be. That's a good, I didn't think about it. I did meet Tom over there the other day to talk about, we can provide chairs, and they have a generator they can use, it's a silent generator for the microphone, or we can run a cord from where the school still is. There's a one shade tree, if it's a hot day, we can put some chairs near the shade of the tree that's pretty much in the same spot we were last year, minus the building behind us.
Yeah.
But that might be a thought. I gotta get the guys to kind of do a dry run and try to set that stage up anyway, so that might be a nice thought.
Okay.
Thanks for that. Okay, so that's been approved, Christine, I'll give this to you. The second is a letter, First Selectman Bob Carlson, on behalf of the Connecticut Municipal Animal Control Officers Association. We would like to take this opportunity to recognize your Animal Control Officer, Kasha Deshafi, and Officer Chelsea Wheeler, for their hard work and dedication to our profession. Officer Deshafi and Wheeler have served their community with compassion and professionalism, putting their well-being of the animals and their care at the highest priority. This week is the Animal Control Officers Appreciation Week, and we are taking the time to thank the animal control officers of the state for all their hard work and what they do throughout the year. Thank you for being outstanding animal control officers in all they do. Sincerely signed by the President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer, so. I'll put that in, I'm gonna put that in Kasha's mailbox if she sees it tomorrow when I go in. And that's all I have for First Selectmen comments. All business, demolition, the one story, two ninety-eight, North Stony Road, I think we just covered that, so we'll skip that. Vacancies and appointments, we have none this evening. We will have a vacancy filled by our new planner starting on April twenty-fourth, which would be great. We'll say that the person that we're using as a Z E O officer part-time through the C O G is doing a wonderful job. Her name's Jen Lindo, and we've told the C O G we'd like to keep her through June thirtieth, so there'll be some overlap with her and the new planner when he comes in. And we're gonna use Nicole Hagerty from the C O G as the planner for, through the middle of May, just so she has a couple of overlap weeks with the new planner also. And then we'll stop her contract, May fifteenth, and Ari will be at... Okay, A P A, A P A, A P A funds update and discussion. In the packet, we just have the most current profit and loss on A P A funds. Seeing that the project's almost done, and I've not got my change order yet from, from Bestec, so the good news is that the job's almost done, and we still have money in there. If it turns out that way, that money will go back to A P A, and then we'll decide how we want to handle that from there.
So we still don't have a final price?
I don't, but it's not gonna be more than it's supposed to be, because the work's gonna be done, and we have a contract, so I've gotta be in this position of strength.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's all I'm gonna report on that. And a conservation development, I got a text tonight from one of the members asking if we had a meeting tonight at six, and the answer was no, we don't. But we have had all our community, assuming our neighborhood meetings except for one, there's one on the twenty-fourth.
I was just gonna say, I think, right, that's the village?
Yeah, the person I was supposed to do it, can't do it, so I may do it myself.
Right, I could probably go as well.
Yeah, so maybe you can, maybe we can do it together?
Yeah.
That'd be great, and it's gonna be in this room with the village people.
Right up my alley.
Okay. But other than that, it's, the survey's out, like Christine, how many people have answered the survey so far? Fifty-three, so we're moving up the ladder, so, and we, and we just posted it again, so. And we, we saw that Mike Anderson mentioned it last night at the Board of Selectmen, which was great. Number seven, Cemetery Commission Presentation.
I'm sorry, what was the date that Juliette said we're doing the wrap-up on the weekend?
I think it's May twentieth, because I won't be here, I'm out of town. I think it's Saturday, May twentieth, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
That's the, what's, what's the name of that?
The visioning session.
Correct. So number seven, Cemetery Commission Presentation. So why we're having this is Brett had mentioned at a previous meeting that we have what we call Advisory Boards for the Board of Selectmen, and we don't always get to see them, talk to them. And we thought maybe it'd be nice if we had possibly once a year, each Advisory Board come in and just tell us what they're doing, what's going on. Tonight is the Cemetery Commission, which Dave Feedy will speak on. Coming up in the future, we have sustainable C T, we'll have affordable housing, Conservation Commission. And, am I missing something, Christine? No, that's it. So we'll try to fit them in as we go through the year, so. So David, if you could, just give us a kind of a, you can use that microphone right there. Kind of just give us a heads up on what the Cemetery Commission's been up to, what you plan on doing. You know, you have a big time coming up with Memorial Day, so, I thank you.
Yeah, that's not a great setup, because of the way that it's, we don't have anything that can put to the podium, I wonder? Maybe take it off? I know, I know, we do have two people online, and I know from being at home, it's really difficult to hear. I don't know if taking it out and holding it would help? Oh, that's perfect.
Yes. I'm David Feedy, Treasurer for the Cemetery Committee, and I live on Winnetog Hill. What we've been doing so far this year is total maintenance of all of the cemeteries and preparation, flags out for Memorial Day. We have also instituted to start placing grave markers, veterans' grave markers. What that means is, they're on a aluminum pole with an emblem that says veteran, not necessarily from which war or whatever, but it's, it's there. Flags sometimes get deteriorated during the course of the year. We put them out on Memorial Day, and then again, on Veterans Day, we put them out, but only checking if they need to be replaced because of the weather conditions before we do that.
I, I'm sorry, I had just a really quick question. When you put them out on Memorial Day, do they stay out, then do you take them back and bring them in? They stay up until Veterans Day?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we leave them all through the winter also.
Okay.
Just, and that seemed to be, I've been with the committee now for over three years, and that's had, that's what has been done in the past, so, that's probably... But we're in the, like I say, we're in the process of doing that. There was a grant came available, we didn't have the time to do it, because we took some money from the budget. Why, and you show, yeah, once they start, but we're kind of guessing. Some of the markers are already outdated, but there's a lot of that just not placed. And some of the stones now are turned down, and you can see the... Like that? Oh, so I hear that? I'm not starting all over, no. So our budget was eight thousand to start with, and we, on the updated printout, and then on the bottom, I wrote, there are eight cemeteries to be done, and that's our spring cleanup. Those are the ones that are mostly visited or viewed from the roadside. But we do those really for Memorial Day and have the flags out and so forth. All of the rest of the cemeteries, the total of fifty-four of them, and the rest are back lot, they're in the woods, or churches, people's houses and so forth, and they'll get all new flags also. But these are gonna be always set aside for the spring cleanup on it. And there's, so that's additional two thousand dollars that will be spent by Memorial Day. And then there's twenty veterans, the grave markers that will be ordered. That's a five hundred and eighty dollar expenditure, so by the end of May, we will have spent seven thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, leaving a balance of two hundred and ninety dollars. Now that balance is back, or I have contact with one man who's gonna do some wall repair. And it'll get started, if he gets back, and you talk about that, just go back to town. Diane was supposed to be here tonight, since we moved from last week. Had other commitments and so forth, didn't come to be here. She is going to start the... Restoring some of the faces on some of the stones, and that's gonna be continued on the basis.
How many cemeteries does the commission work on, whether it be cleaning and...
There's fifty-four veterans' cemeteries just in North Stony.
Fifty-four, wow.
There's a total of a hundred and twenty-four in North Stony.
Oh my God.
Yeah. A lot of the cemeteries are, we have, we built our volunteer list by leaps and bounds. The old committees usually do them, when you could get to them and so forth, and sometimes you didn't get to them for like two years, three years, especially the ones in the back. When I say back, walk out into the woods for fifteen minutes.
Wow.
Great cemetery there. But now I've asked homeowners if they would like to put the flags out, they drop, they do, they do the cleaning and so forth. And we were always checking for tall trees and things, but, yeah, it's, it's a job, it's a job.
So, have we started putting name tags? I think that I went by one.
Signs.
Yes, like little, little signs that give the name of that particular one. I love that, yeah.
Thank you. They're all registered with the Hail Registry, the state and federal registry, that places them. Recognized as veterans' cemetery.
Yeah.
Which started that last year, ended through using money when we had it available. Good step forward. I've been also, which I'll give to you afterward, say, list of all the cemeteries and directions on how to get there.
I love that.
Years ago, it was, you go to the Brown Farm, go behind their barn, the big pine tree, walk into the woods. Well, the Browns aren't there, the pine tree's gone, I don't know what you're doing, but, so, it kind of made... Pinted road back, route two north, do this, do that, and so forth.
Things that won't change.
Yeah, and that's being typed right now, so. You don't have to read my handwriting.
That's great.
Well, thank you.
Do we know the oldest grave in Ta, in North Stonington?
No, we, Diane, but I don't. I do ninety percent of the, not the physical work I did the first couple of years. You know, we've got to increase our budget, have a good person that does it, and, but she's more the, I can see historian.
Historian.
Keeping, and she likes to do that, and I can't, can't fit that thing too well anymore, you know, but, no, we work together. And a lot of homeowners are very interested in cleaning up their own cemetery, and so they could read it, so.
That's good.
Yep. All of this is in conjunction with the Historical Society. So once these directions are typed up, then they'll get their copy and so forth, and I hope they can have them available to people who come in, into town to ask about it. And yes, even though these cemeteries are out in the woods and so forth, they are people from out of state relatives, and as I'm cleaning, there they are, they're very interested in so.
Yeah.
That kind of makes it worthwhile.
Do you foresee anything within the next year making your costs go up, that you would need?
No, no, at this time, we're not gonna ask for any more money we have, and it just, now, the new budget comes out, we take care of the woods and so forth, that are not as...
From...
Yes, are visited and so forth, but they need to be trimmed, they need to be cleaned and so forth. Our schedule is, for spending the money, it's pretty, pretty used up, or it takes care of itself right at this stage right now. And we'll be continuing buying the markers as we see fit, and where they're gonna go and so forth.
So the good news is too, the, the board is full, I think, there's no vacancies at this point, correct?
No, no vacancies.
And they have a few new people that joined in the last year, which is nice.
So how many altogether?
Excuse me?
How many on your board?
Seven.
And then you said you have a list of volunteers that...
Yes, and Diane publishes that once a year in the quarterly, or sorry, quarterly, naming the families and so forth. And it's just some kind of feedback that we can, that, and they appreciate it.
Once in a while, they'll do something that's pretty fascinating, they bring a guy, what's Michael's last name, Carol? Michael Carol?
Yes.
Like, probably, he's like six eight, but he comes from Hoptid, and he's, he's an expert in restoring old cemetery stones that are broken in half, and he epoxies them back together, and they clean them up, and, and they'll do a work party, which I joined one, one time at the Randall Brown Cemetery, and it was very fascinating about how the work went on. We cleaned it, and then they, they worked on some of the stones to fix them, and, and honored the people that the stones were for. I mean, remember last year, that when we gave them an extra thousand dollars in the budget at the eleventh hour? We said that the, you know, these people gave their whole lives, most of them in town, now there's no one here to fend for them, so it's up to us to do that, and I think that's why. It's nice that we have this commission doing such a good job, so. Well, thank you, David.
Thank you very much for all your time and effort.
Yeah, we can get Diane to come sometime, and Nicole can ask her, because I think those are great questions, too.
I'm fascinated, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. There's a member of the committee, Mike Dibble, has slides of these. He's been on the committee quite a few years, and he has slides and so forth, just retired, so maybe he was gonna give a presentation at the library.
Oh, that'll be great.
All right, if he does that, let us know.
Yeah, yeah.
And one of your newest members, Rachel, she's a walking encyclopedia. She's fairly young, I think she's in her maybe forty-ish, but she's, she's one of the white family, and she knows, knows where everybody's buried, she knows who they are, where they are. It's amazing how much she knows for her age as far as history of the town, so.
That's cool. I think that would be, if you haven't already hooked up with the library, I think that would be a fascinating talk for anybody in town.
It has already been.
Yeah, perfect.
Especially around Halloween.
Yeah, ooh, that would be great.
All right, thanks, David.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you wanna check and see if Brian's pretty online?
Is anyone online that has a quiz online, Brian?
Brian and...
Okay, does anyone, does anyone have a question online? Anyone named Brian have a question online? No, okay. Brian, hopefully you could hear better once Dave picked up the microphone. If you can't hear us, let us know. Okay, number eight, ordinance changes. We may get questions on this, we'll see, but Christine, will you go through the ordinance changes, and we'll discuss them?
Well, Brian, you put your hand up, was it about cemeteries, or just letting us know that you could hear?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know, I, I couldn't hear a thing he said, but I thought I heard Bob say something about, are they looking for volunteers?
No, 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 just when they, sometimes they'll have a work party, and that's when they will ask for volunteers to come in.
Oh, okay.
Like a big cleanup job, and they're gonna maybe doing some work on fixing some of the stones and things like that. So usually, there's a word goes out, there's gonna have a group, and anywhere from fifteen to twenty people show up and kind of clean the cemetery all in one shot, and it's pretty interesting. And there's a couple of people that come in, this gentleman I mentioned from Hoptid, which this is what he does, he's, it's probably not his main job, but he, he's an expert at epoxying cemeteries that, stones have been broken in half and so on, so. It's, it's pretty fascinating, but if I do hear one, Brian, I'd be glad to let you know about it.
All right, yeah, that'd be great, that's one thing I can do is work.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so, ordinances, Christine, if you want to just go through them, and we can discuss.
Yep, so, I separated them, this is, the intention of this is this, these will be the packets for the town meeting. So we're starting off with new proposed ordinances. The first section is taxation, and it's a waiver of certain taxes due, so this is the one to waive a bill if the bill is less than five dollars. Okay, so, waiving a bill if it's less than five dollars for the original bill, which goes in line with State Statute twelve dash one forty-four C. The next one is adding an administrative fee for motor vehicle tax delinquencies. Again, this is in, in line with the Connecticut State statutes, and it would establish a five-dollar fee for releasing the motor vehicle delinquency through Department of Motor Vehicles, which has a putting-on, taking-off process that the tax collector has to do. So this would be instating, instating, yes, a new fee for that. Then the next one is the, what the Tax Relief Committee had presented. So this is the Connecticut Homeowners Program Local Option. So I'm just gonna read this, because I don't know that we've discussed it in public meeting yet. So, "Be it enacted by the North Stonington Board of Selectmen, that a local option to the Connecticut Homeowners Program be established per the guidelines of Connecticut General Statutes twelve dash one twenty-nine N. The local option to the Connecticut Homeowners Program allows a municipality to increase the amount of tax exemptions on a residential property used in the primary residence of a person over the age of sixty-five and other conditions in line with Connecticut General Statutes twelve dash one twenty-nine N. The income limits for qualification to the program, as well as the amount of the exemptions, will be adjusted from time to time, and will be set at the beginning of the program on or before February first, two thousand twenty-three, and each subsequent year. For the first year of the program, the income limits and the amount of exemption will be set upon passage. Any subsequent changes to the Homeowners Program shall be established by the town meeting." So the last page of the statutes identifies what the assessor put together for the local option, so it increases the income threshold to sixty-five thousand dollars, as recommended by the Tax Relief Committee. So this will again be included in the packet, but it won't be published as part of the ordinance, because as the ordinance states, that it will, may change from time to time, and we will do that at town meeting. Then the next one is the cannabis... Prohibition of the use on town property of cannabis, so this follows what we had discussed in a prior meeting, no changes to that. Then we are, so then, so those are four new ordinances. Then we are looking to make changes to existing ordinances. So the first is adding to the permit required for soliciting orders or purchases for future delivery of goods. So this is adding, "Solicitation includes the making of surveys for research purposes, analysis, opinion polls, rating data, and any similar work which involves interviewing door-to-door or upon the sidewalk streets or any public place of the town." Then in the applications section, we are removing and renumbering, because we're removing the requirement to file with the town the name and address of the person for whom home orders are to be solicited and filled. And then we are adding to that a section that the Board of Selectmen may waive the requirement for peddler's license for special events, peddlers working in conjunction with event organizers, and our part of the event organizer's plan will be exempt as long as a waiver has been granted to the event organizers by the board. Then we are changing the permit fee section. It was twenty-five dollars upon issuance of the permit, and now we are updating to the schedule of a twenty-five dollar for a one-day fee, a hundred dollars per person for a six-month license, and two hundred dollars for a one-year license. And then we are removing Chapter fifteen, Peddlers and Solicitors, including all sections and subsections, because that was a redundancy of the business section. So, all this information will be included in the town meeting packet, and as we get to the next part of the agenda, we'll talk about how the questions are being proposed to be asked on the town meeting call. So are there any questions about those ordinances?
Is there any changes? I don't know, so, they make, it's all makes sense, it's common sense. I think it's nice that we're gonna do something, we just ran into this with the peddlers last year with the farmers market, and then again with the No Stone Festival, so, sometimes, as Jen would say, it's tough to get all the different peddlers to pay twenty-five-dollar fee, especially if they're only gonna sell, you know, fifty dollars... uh, sometimes as Jen would say, it's tough to get all the different peddlers to pay $25 fee, especially if they only going to sell, you know, $50 worth of things that evening. So, um, we, I think we looked at Stonington and a few other towns and, uh, it made sense to go this route. Uh, the other ones were common sense. I guess some people could argue that why are we charging $5 for, you know, reinstating someone at the transfers? I mean, at the, uh, uh, registration, get your registration back, but at the DMV. But at this time and this paperwork that goes into that and, um, uh, the new tax selector Zane said it was done where she was before and it made sense there. Um, so again, we'll, this will all be on the town meeting. I'll read that call in a little while when we get to that. But these are things at the town meeting that should go fairly quickly because they make sense. Nothing we're doing is out of the ordinary. Brett Snell's still not on, right? So.
Um, and these are the ordinances we're doing now. It doesn't mean that we can't do other ordinances at future town meetings. These are just the ones that we have prepared for this, at this time.
And I think it's important to start getting some clean, things cleaned up. Um, you know, this term ends for us in November. So it'd be good to get some, some ordinances cleaned up before the next term starts, whoever may be here for that. Um, okay. So we don't have to voting on this evening because we're going to take care of this when we get down to the next section, correct? Which is now, town meeting discussion. So I think what we want to talk about the town meeting is, um, the date, the time. You know, we, pretty much the date we've talked about was May 1st and that fits into the ongoing schedule that we've been able to keep with not having any snow, snowfalls that would cancel meetings and we were pretty lucky to hit everything on time. Time of the meeting, um, typically our meetings could be at 6:00, 6:30, or 7:00. Nicole, I don't know if you have any thoughts on the time meeting, what time you'd like to have the town meeting?
No, I mean, I, it, uh, anything works for me. When I think about people coming and children and dinners, I'm thinking sometimes seven might be easier. I don't know. Either that or.
So I find two things.
What have they been in the past?
Seven o'clock a lot, but I find that, um, we've heard by some people that have trouble, six o'clock's too early.
Yeah.
You don't have time for dinner and seven o'clock, some people eat dinner and then they're sitting around, they're tired and they go, I really don't feel like going out at this point. I feel like.
That's a good point.
So I think the 6:30 to make sense to me. It saves a half hour. I guess, I know when we have a seven o'clock meeting with, um, planning and zoning or border finance, it's like, oh, really? I got, how much time I have to kill between getting home, eating it and then going back out. So.
No, that's a good point.
So, uh, 6:30 would make sense. Christine, I think that's what we'll put it at that. May 1st makes sense. And then I guess we want to talk about what questions, and maybe I should read the call for what questions that we want to send to referendum. And what questions would we vote on at the town meeting? Now, it doesn't mean that at the town meeting, someone could could motion to send a particular question to referendum if they wanted to. But, um, is that, that's correct. Okay. So why don't I go through the, the call real quick and then we can talk about that. And then if there's any input by anyone that's online or here, we could do that. So the town meeting call, basically, I'll just read the actual numbers. Number one, "Shall the Town of North Stonington approve the estimates and recommendations of the Board of Finance with respect to the annual budget, including general government operating at $5,552,383, redemption of debt, $1,382,949, and capital, $415,420,000 for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, in the total of $7,350,752." Uh, obviously those numbers, numbers could change depending on what happens tomorrow night with the Board of Finance. Secondly, "Shall the Town of North Stonington approve the estimates and recommendations of the Board of Finance with respect to the annual Board of Education budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $15,168,084." Again, subject to change.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, cause I can't remember last year. Do we always separate out the two, um, budgets?
So we, historically we did. And then there was some pushback a few years ago that we should put it into one. I was against it, but the other two segment voted to do that and it went to one. And that particular year, I thought there was a lot of confusion because when the budget failed, we didn't know why it failed.
Yeah. No, I, I, it was just a curious question. I think that it's a good, I agree. It's a good idea because at least then you know where
Which budget to work on. Exactly. Um, I don't think there's an intent at this point to change it back to one. Um, but if the board decides that we want to do that in future years, we could do that. Uh, number three, "Shall the Town deobligate the capital projects fund animal control vehicle in the amount of $4,99, $4,929.91 The NSAAA ambulance stretcher lease in the amount of $954.49. The North Stonington Volunteer Fire Company breathing apparatus lease in the amount of 74 cents. And, uh, fire company's ready replacement in the amount of $1,0456.88. Number four, "Shall the Town deobligate the capital fund walking floor trailer in the amount of $46,000." "Shall the Town adopt the ordinance section 19 dash four waiver of certain taxes due. The Town of North Stonington Tax Director is authorized to waive all taxes due in the amount of $5 or less where via the original tax bill did not exceed $5 pursuant to GS, uh, statute 12 dash 144C. And six, "Shall the Town adopt the ordinance section 19.5 motor vehicle tax delinquencies, creating an administrative fee for each delinquency." And seven, "Shall the Town adopt an ordinance, 19, section 19 dash 24 Connecticut Homeowners Program Local Option, expanding the state program." And eight, "Shall the Town adopt an ordinance, 20, chapter 21 cannabis article one prohibition of use of on town property, including all sections and subsections." And nine, "Shall the Town approve amendments to local ordinance businesses, vendors, hawkers, and solicitors." Uh, six dash 192, six dash 193, six dash 195, chapter 15 peddlers and solicitors as presented and made available at the town clerk's office at 40 Main Street, North Stonington, Connecticut. Number 10, "Shall the town clerk be allowed to publish an abbreviated version of the legal ad regarding the notice of passage of these ordinances." Um, my only thought there was the, and actually the town treasurer mentioned it also, that we send the ordinance on the seniors to referendum. It's just like we're going to send it with the, um, with the budget. So I think everything else could be handled in, in-house on that evening. If, um, if somebody wants to send one of these other ones, they can. They can make a motion. It could go. I think off the bat, we should say that one should go. And can we change the, the numbers on these ordinances on this? Or we have to do this call this evening and in this order? Cause we have to send this. We have to vote on this tonight, right?
No, no, no. Today we are looking at this so that we're ready to go for Friday. You're not calling.
Oh, that's right. Friday mornings meeting.
Yeah. So if you want to move anything around, the only thing you can't move, number 10 has to be number 10.
Yeah. So I would just say that, um, just to keep the three going to the town meeting, going to, yeah.
So one, two, and five, make that one, two, and three.
I agree. And then drop everything back if that's okay.
It's one, two, and seven right now.
One, two, and seven, correct.
Oh. Oh, sorry. Yep. I just saw taxes and I couldn't read further.
So I think that would make sense. That way we keep them together. So we can say the first three, we'd like to send a referendum, referendum in four through 10 now.
So do you want to move the, the obligation at, do you want to do all the ordinances together? Or do one ordinance, two deobligations, four ordinance?
Why don't we do the deobligations at the end just before number 10? So we can make those eight and nine. That'd be okay? Or would you like to make them the first two things we do?
Nope. So what we'll do is we'll go, we'll move, I said you couldn't move 10, but you can move 10 to eight. It just has to be with the ordinances.
Got you.
So we can move the two deobligations to questions nine and 10. If you guys are okay with that.
Makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it really matters. I was thinking we're talking finances with one and two and three. And do we just stay with that and?
We can make the, uh, the, the obligations four and five if you'd like.
Yeah. And then just put all the ordinances together.
Why don't we do that, Christine?
You're splitting ordinance that way. Cause so we have, so number three, number three is a deobligation, right?
I thought you wanted to move the adopting of the homeowners local option up to number three.
Yep. So that's, sorry. So that's, oh, so.
That's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance that has a financial impact. I, I think I'm overthinking it. It doesn't matter. Yeah. I'll, I'll go with that.
Okay. So do you want to do the deobligations as four and five? Or do you want to do them as nine and 10? Nine and 10?
Sure.
Okay. So that means number 10 will become number eight.
Got it.
Okay. Um, is there any, has Brian got his hand up? Okay. Uh, any other?
So, so then at 10, so on Friday, all we're doing is making the motion to move this forward as is. I mean, obviously we'll fill Brett in and.
Yeah. So if there's any changes tomorrow night at the Board of Finance meeting, I'll make changes to questions one and two.
Yep.
Um, and then reorder these so that it's the right order. And then, um, once you guys call it, we'll all leave the copy in your mailbox to sign over the weekend.
We're doing the meeting on, are we doing it here? Meeting on Friday morning? Who are we going to have that meeting?
We can't. We're doing it hybrid.
Oh, we're doing hybrid. Okay.
Um, but we know why you'd come all the way over here.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So do a hybrid.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be hybrid.
And then, um, should that, in that date, I'll read the entire call once again. So it's on the record as finished. And we'll vote to send it. And that's the only thing that'll be on that agenda, correct? Okay. That should be a short meeting. Okay. Great. Any other discussion on this topic?
Did you want to talk about the time, the, start the discussion on the timing for the referendum? Or wait till Friday?
So, yeah, let's wait for Friday. Cause Brett will be here. We can all talk about it. So far, there's nothing we did. I don't think that Brett would felt that he missed. Okay. Number 10, um, minutes. Nicole, would you like to do the minutes? No tax refunds, which is good.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, um, Town of North Stonington's Board of Selectmen meeting on March 28th, 2023 at 6:30 PM, um, at the North Stonington Education Center and via Zoom. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve those written as is.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, two, zero, one absent. Two, zero, zero. Okay. Next.
What? Oh. Oh, I was literally just going to ask, um, if that was, yep, um, there it is. Uh, uh, so I'll make a motion to approve the Town of North Stonington's Board of Selectmen's special meeting held at Swan Town Hill Road, near 147 Swan Town Hill Road in the woods, uh, on April 2nd of 2023 at 10 AM as written.
Second. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two, zero, zero.
We, um, are, are we putting that on the, um, the next agenda?
So I have a meeting tomorrow, um, myself, our town attorney, Bill Ricker, um, Jeremy Whipple from the tribe that we met that day and their attorney. Uh, we have a, I think it's a one o'clock meeting tomorrow afternoon to discuss this. So um, I'll be able to report back on it. Uh, next meeting on the, not Friday's meeting, but the next regular meeting. Thank you for asking. Is there any public comment? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, the next meeting that we have is actually Friday at, uh, 10:30. It's April 21st. Be a short meeting just to make the call of the town meeting. And then we have a meeting scheduled for the, um, next Tuesday, the 25th. And we can talk more about that on Friday, whether we need to have that meeting or not. Okay. All right. I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.